Gentlemen, we can ask you to please stay in the merits of the conference.
Good evening and thank you very much. To open proceedings tonight, I would like to invite Pastor Michael Scotty from the Subdivision Church to open.
Thank you. Good evening. We pray: May Almighty God, who is the source of all blessings and everything that is good and blessed, be a part of this gathering at its beginning, its end, and during the time in between. May God's Spirit guide us in all that is discussed and decided here. May He inspire us with words that say what they mean. May those words fall winsomely on the ears of all gathered here. May God bless us with the ability to speak with integrity and to work with uncompromising diligence. May God help us focus on what truly matters and gives us the insight to discern what is right. May our hearts be filled with love, a desire for truth and justice tempered with mercy. May that mind and those values determine the course we take, and may they shape our interactions. We ask God to grant us wisdom to make good decisions, courage to take the necessary risks, unshapable hope to maintain a steadfast spirit, good humour to keep things in perspective, and deep trust so that as we risk, we remain grounded in God and all that is good and right and which serves others. So may God bless us with the personal joy of knowing as we retire at the end of the meeting we have acted out of love and integrity, we have done our best, we have served God and others with our hearts. And so may He add His richest blessing and peace to Christ who makes us and our prayers worthy. Amen. You're welcome. Have a good night.
To close proceedings, I'd like to invite the Australian Aboriginal Committee as the official custodians of the late representative of tonight. May we speak to the headless pastor president, and also remind these that officially he will be available on the ground for support later in the week. Thank you. To the meeting adjutant, our colleagues, item two, confirmation of the minutes for the council meeting on the 13th of June and the special council meeting on the 26th of June. Item three, item four, council notes the workshops concluded on 19th of 26th June should be increased by 50%. I think this is early, so I think in better, it's more. Item five, the division's for all women or persons?
Um, eleven point three, point three, eleven point three, point three.
Six, is adding your position, there's nothing in the agenda, I'm going to be drawn for. Here, Alderman James, is my question on, if there are any matters of notice, I'll leave questions from this outside. Any other questions, please?
Suchi Yudhuta from 84 Malana Road, Lindisfarne. I was just wondering when ratepayers can expect the report on the council delegation's trip to China?
Mr. Mayor, I am aware the report is being prepared and I would, um... Sorry, I'm, as I said earlier, I'm aware that it is being prepared, I would be hopeful that it can be presented within three weeks, but I don't do it, we asked to deliver the position of the item.
Thank you.
Item eight, or nine, reports about side buildings, southern country, sorry, many. I would like to table the minutes from the board meeting in 26th of June. I think referees and speakers have been very good, thank them. Mr. Mayor, we had a workshop on the United Rules for the Road Coming Forward, it's time to be publicly advertised, we sit down. Is there something to report on the question of good cooperation? I think before the council session, please, I would like to...
I have a copy of the minutes of the last lot concerned, Lincoln. The Chief Advisor, Timothy, and the Howard Committee member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two reports to present, both of which are related to travel on behalf of the council. The first one is I attended, on behalf of Claret City Council, the Cities 4.0 Summit, which was a conference focused on smart cities, smart city concepts, smart city technologies. I basically given a report that goes through point by point every, every single presentation and workshop that I was involved in the conference, and towards the end some, some observations that may be of interest to Claret City Council, should we, and I strongly recommend that we do ourselves pursue some smart city ideas. The other reports, myself and Alderman fairly, thanks to the support of, because it was an international trip, so we did need a resolution of the council to endorse it, and we went to Auckland, hosted by Auckland Transport, for a very comprehensive look at Auckland's, Auckland City's approach to integrated transport, to public transport, where they're doing some incredibly innovative things, and I think it's a particularly interesting read, especially when we consider a couple of items that are coming up towards the end of this agenda. And with your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, if any of my colleagues have any questions on either of those reports, I have circulated copies to my, to the other aldermen in advance, so I would welcome any questions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Alderman Hume, may I say that I thought the reports were excellent. They covered a many, many aspects of what I think they embarked to discover and find out. But my question through you to Daniel Alderman Hume, or Alderman fairly, is that, given the size and scale of the Auckland City Council, how can you sort of relate that to the Hobart City Council as far as integrated transport system is concerned? On the one hand, it seems to me to be a, well, it's a very large council, I think 1 million residents, whereas we're talking about Hobart of 250,000 in its immediate growing virus.
Mr. Mayor, I thank Alderman James for his question. I did actually make some observations in the report, not just about how the, the observations from the Auckland study can, are attributable to Hobart, but also how they are not attributable. And I did mention, you know, the, the size and scale, I did mention the difference between, you know, the number of levels of government in New Zealand and in Tasmania, and how the responsibilities are divided differently. But I, without going point by point, I have actually explained some, how some of the observations are attributable to what we might do in Claret City Council. If we are going to take an integrated approach to, to transport, then we would do it at a greater Hobart level, and that's something that we would need to do in consultation with other councils, but of course the state government. And I think that that, while the responsibility for transport at a local government level is fairly limited in our jurisdiction, there are, there are two roles the council have, we manage council roads, so not just arterial roads, and we manage, you know, location of bus stops, you know, we manage some of that in the urban planning context. But we also, you know, we have responsibility for transport infrastructure. So if there is a, if there are other modes of transport that come on board, such as ferries, for example, then we have responsibility for ferry terminals. But the, the other thing that I think should be noted is that while the overwhelming role for transport is at the state government level, council has an advocacy role. And what I have, what I have advocated in the report is, is that we look at establishing some kind of authority that looks at transport at a Hobart-wide level with cooperation from the councils and state government. And that, you know, we, we, in terms of the responsibilities at a state government level, that body would have a, a planning and advocacy role and have input into, into state government decisions, so we can have an integrated approach from that point of view. I think, I think the lessons from Auckland are actually very, very applicable if we adopt that sort of approach. In terms of, you know, what they've done in terms of promoting alternative modes of transport, and, you know, cycle lanes is another example of, you know, where councils promote alternative modes of transport, and in terms of integrating, you know, integrating timetables, integrating transport modes, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I refer council to the weekly briefing report of the 13th of June 2017 regarding the condition compliance on the hotel and hospitality school at Kangaroo Bay. And I thank Mr. Gibbs, the acting manager, for outlining answers to my question. My question through to you, Mr. Mayor, in capacity as the mayor of Clarens, there are a number of conditions that are outlined on page 12 of 12, including materials and colours, public art, et cetera, et cetera. But is there another condition that relates to a memorandum of understanding between council and the government? Is that still in place, or has that been ticked off as to enable this project to proceed?
I have all the courses under, gentlemen, you have the... I am aware of the memorandum of understanding, it's talked about with Hunter Developments and council, thank you.
I'll try to explain it. I understand there is a memorandum of understanding between the government, council, and Hunter. Well, is there a memorandum of understanding between council and the government? Please.
What condition number is it?
Well, it's not shown on here, that's the problem.
Well, it's not a condition on the banner, and I can't see that's relevant.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know as to whether there was another condition. I thought there was a condition in relation to a memorandum of understanding between the state government and council with regard to public land.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's a question in a slightly different way. The Minister for Crown Lands did transfer three of the title of the Crown Land to council by notice some, somewhere in the range of three to six months ago. That, that, in effect, the Crown Land was transferred to council some, three to six months ago as part of a state government contribution to, to development of Kangaroo Bay. It was transferred to council.
I'm quite happy, James, that I wasn't sure when you were talking about public land or Crown Lands, that the land that was transferred was under lease to the Gauri government, it was under the public land status. Any other questions from the meeting?
Yes, the second question is in relation to the weekly briefing report of the 19th of June 2017 regarding Rosney Hill Development, which is mentioned on page 20 of the circular. It says here that dot point three, it is in the intention of the proponents to submit a revised design or consideration of the council in the two to three months. My question through you to Mr. Gibbs, no, it's to the Economic Development Office, perhaps to the man, to the general manager. Is it, is it so, Mr. Paul, that we have in fact up to now received the design for the project, and this is a redesign of the project? I just can't understand as to why the words, to submit a redesigned, a revised design for consideration by council, is that, could you explain that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that the proponents, again, Hunter Developments, are looking to, following a public consultation process where there was some public consternation about the proposal, have been going through a series of redesigns trying to make the proposal, in their mind, both more acceptable and more commercial. And it's my understanding that they will be coming back to council in three months with a revised design or redesign of the original proposal to, for council to give consideration. Can you inform the DA? Prior to the location of the DA, all right?
Thank you. All right, any other questions in the weekly briefing report? There's something to report, 11.2, so I advise the council now to insist there's a plan authority on the land which is paying us the tax. This item is 11.3.1, which is the result of that case, it's 109 County District Gauri, 200 places.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, that's a typically inappropriate use of land for infill, infill housing. The blocks are significantised blocks, and it's inappropriate for the area.
I endorse the staff recommendations, but would like to point out that I don't support on-street parking for this particular area in consideration of strategic planning for road use in the future. So at this point, it would be nice to see staff, you know, reconsider the fact that on-street parking is a right.
Reprovision of subject to conditions in advance, have any comments? 11.22, the application of 31 Henry Road, and our attitude might be wrong.
The officer's recommendation.
The motion is the officer's recommendation, DA has 43A, so I have to...
Gate any problems?
Oh, as you say, Mr. Mayor, I think when the subdivision was approved, and it had to be approved, it was inappropriate. But having been approved, it's now reasonable that people want to build on the, on the, the blocks that were provided from the subdivision.
Yes, look, I'd like to endorse those comments of Alderman James. We had a substantive debate on this issue, Mr. Mayor, back at that time when it was proposed to be subdivided, and a lot of the issues that were raised at that time were basically dismissed as was, is the means by which we do that when we are dealing with a subdivision versus a DA. And it's ironic that at this time now, we are dealing with a DA. And all those issues that were raised at the time by those concerned residents were dismissed because it was a subdivision. So the days of when we had a section 43A, which was a subdivision and also a DA, I welcomed that because at the same time we could address the fact of a DA being incorporated within a subdivision, and therefore you had that argument of being able to debate the, the pros and cons of a subdivision and at the same time of a DA. Because it was dealt under section 43A. It is interesting that you can go down this course of, of not necessarily having the approval in place for a DA because it did require certain setbacks. But once you have the subdivision in place, then again, you have to deal with the DA. I know I sound going round in circles here, but it is a shame when those issues that were brought up at that time and that relate to the DA haven't really been brought on board in the consideration of the DA because basically the people have said, well, there's not much use going ahead with this because the subdivision was approved, and now we've got this particular application which doesn't meet all the requirements of the, of the, of the plans or Claret's interim planning scheme. But the performance criterias have been able to work around the issue and hence be able to say that because of its location and its proximity to walking public space and, and access to the, the main street, that the performance criteria can be used in a subjective, in my view, in a subjective nature to allow this particular project to go through. I think it's unfortunate, but then again, this is the debate that we have to have the acceptable solutions, say one thing, and then we can work on and we can sort of grind down and come up with a performance criteria which actually fits, fits the, the issue. So having said that, it was only one representative, and I believe there would have been more if it had dealt with under 43A. But nevertheless, it's been recommended for approval, I'll support the recommendation.
Mayor, I just want to say on the comments that Alderman James has just made, when it comes to a, a subdivision, we do have, as I understand it, a clause in the planning scheme that looks at the question of can you have a hypothecated development? I mean, you know, we're talking about the, the impacts of a development that followed the subdivision. But there is, there is a clause in there that looks at, you know, the question of can a, some hypothecated development be developed on the lot that is compliant with the planning scheme? No, I, I don't have any question that our planning staff, who I think are extraordinarily professional and do a very good job, have looked at, have looked at this development objectively and the question of whether it applies with the relevant acceptable solutions or where it doesn't, whether it then complies with the performance criteria. And whatever, whatever debates we had about the, the previous subdivision, the fact is that we now have a development before us that complies with the planning scheme, which clearly demonstrates that, you know, some hypothecated development could comply with the scheme when the subdivision was proposed. So, you know, I think whatever we might say about the appropriateness of the subdivision when it comes to the impacts of potential development, we have a development that complies, and that was, that was considered as part of the subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, just a point of clarification. This wouldn't have been a section 43A because there wasn't any zoning involved. Ah, thank you.
That's all right, she's quite right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this application is a child of the planning scheme where the different zones were changed like for like, and what was larger blocks in a rural setting became residential. So within that context, this application fits the current residential conditions. However, for the local community and the character of the area that they bought into originally, I'm sure that they're still pretty annoyed at the fact that where they have blocks on a hill, they could possibly have residential development that will block the views or create privacy and noise issues. And those are the reasons why some of those larger blocks in rural areas, I believe, have been, you know, disenfranchised from their original intent of the quality of life that people are expecting here. However, for us as a, as a planning authority working under the current planning scheme, we can approve.
Item 3.4 is the location of the station, there's 68 Jenny Road, Claret.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a single drawing on a lot that I think is 426 square metres, and I mean, I've looked at this, at acceptable solutions, Mayor, and I think this is a good development and deserves supporting.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I've had a good look at this, and I went a bit of a look at it, and I think this is quite all right. It's interesting to note that we had some objections, but even the, the person behind did not object, and it's only up to six point in height, it's only up 6.4 metres, so I think that's pretty reasonable when it could go to 8.5.
Mr. Mayor, I've been looking at this as well, and the design of these units is quite clever and acceptable, and the layout is, is good as well, so I'm happy to support this application.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, there were... Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, um, there were nine representations in relation to this and on page ninety-six, the actual, uh, is, let me just see, the actual site coverage and private open space for the dwellings under ten point four point three A two, the acceptable solutions on page ninety-six is not located to the south, south east or southwest of the dwelling unless the area receives at least three hours of sunlight to fifty percent of the area between nine AM and three PM on the twenty-first of June. And under the proposal, it does not comply for unit one, seventy-four percent sunlight available in the private open space in front of the dwelling is at nine AM only. Okay, so in fact, unit one does not have sufficient sunlight in the private open space and only to the existing dwelling at nine AM only. Then when we get to the performance criteria, then it goes into detail in relation to privacy for all dwellings and acceptable solutions states that it does not comply, the kitchen and living room windows of the existing dwelling would be located point nine from the shared driveway and also one metre, if it is separated by a screen of at least one point seven in height, does not comply, as mentioned above, for privacy for all dwellings. So, look, I just feel that the whole question of what is acceptable and what the actual officer is saying in relation to the performance criteria on page ninety-eight, that they're talking about window sills of being horizontal distances point one metre short of the one metre allowable under acceptable solutions. And then on the other hand, it's referring to the fact that there is insufficient sunlight to unit one and only for nine at the hour of nine AM. So having said all that, would Mr. Gibbs be able to explain to me as to why the performance criterias, a criteria in this instance, in relation to the site coverage and private open space for all dwellings and how in fact it is not providing sufficient sunlight to unit one as per the acceptable solutions? Supplementary, does that mean, Mr. Gibbs, that if there is sufficient sunlight to public open space, then in fact that meets the acceptable solutions matter, doesn't it? I just...
I believe it makes the open space area.
Yes, look, it's one becoming two. It's a reasonably substantive block. We've read the officers' recommendations around this matter and if that hasn't convinced you, people might like to reflect on previous decisions this council has made in this area on this street and the ramifications of those decisions.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think Alderman James is obviously right in observing that the, when it comes to clause ten point four point three A two, that the development is non-compliant in a number of areas with the acceptable solution. But as we all know, having sat as a planning authority for many years, that, you know, when you, when a development is not compliant with the acceptable solution, you then move to the relevant performance criteria. And there are, you know, the performance criteria says that there needs to be private open space, includes a area capable of serving as extension of the dwelling for outdoor relaxation, including children's play, areas are provided, it's convenient related in relation to living area in the dwelling, you know, showing the performance criteria living areas and oriented to take advantage of sunlight. And we can have a look at the shadow diagrams that are provided on page one hundred and nine, I think it is, and it shows that there are a couple of areas of private open space that receive sunlight through a reasonably significant portion of the day. So I believe that the officers have done a good job of assessing this and I think objectively it does comply with the requirement.
I'm sorry, do you have a second to say?
No, I was the second. I was the second. I didn't speak.
But just in relation to overshadowing as usual, I note that within the sketches that the rear private open space has got food eating, outdoor arrangements, and yet the second story veranda outlook is above the garage, which is in shadow after lunch. So for me, I'm, as a mother, would like to have seen eating outdoors in an area of sunlight. And if that is the second story at the rear of the building, then that's where it should be. Not this convenient kitchen drainage plumbing ideology that goes with builders, but in the usage of a building which looks at people's quality of life. So the front of this building is going to be without sun from lunchtime permanently all year round. And that should be taken into account when they are doing their building design so that the living and habitable rooms are facing warmth.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I understand and I thank people for their contribution. I must say, I did read this report twice because at some state, sometimes I found it difficult to comprehend, but when I went up and had a look at the site, you can understand why the officers have recommended this for approval. Of course, both unit one and two are owned by the same person and as I said earlier, the fact is, if you thought of anyone would be complaining, it's the people behind and they did not. So I think the officers have done a very good job with this and I think certainly should go ahead and have a look at the site.
Mayor, I was to move a procedural motion.
Sorry, are you seconding the procedural motion?
I can.
Go ahead, I'll move that, please.
I wish to see that A and B are actually dealt with ad veriatum as a belief that they're two separate aspects of the consultation.
So we deal with A and then we deal with B. Bring up the proceeding motion.
I think it's very sensible, Mr. Mayor. I support exercise, cycling, I'm a member of a gym, as I have been for forty years and attend almost every day. Clarence Street is not appropriate for bike lanes. It is not wide enough, there's not enough room and I think it would create a, more of a hazard and more a danger by putting bike lanes in there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I can't support A and I go to page one hundred and twenty-three where at the meeting of the seventh of November two thousand and sixteen, where it was decided that we would go up to public consultation, there were a list of reasons as to why that decision should occur. And I actually was the person who moved the motion. And I just want to go through very briefly and detail, if you like, the history of Clarence Street because I've actually been involved for a number of years with the Bike Committee, I think ever since I've been on council and that's almost ten years. And as you can see on page one hundred and twenty-three, part D, the reason for council's decision, the safety of Clarence Street has actually been part of the two thousand and seven and two thousand and thirteen Clarence Bicycle Action Plan, which council approved both of those. We've had a report from Sinclair Night and Mird, which actually detailed that there was a risk to all users of Clarence Street in relation to a number of aspects. And one of those key aspects that they dealt with was the channelisation, they recommended the channelisation of Clarence Street. So that there was clear delineation for cars using Clarence Street and also for other users of Clarence Street. We then went on to have a special consultation process and we had a collaborative reference group and I hope that one of the members who is actually here tonight doesn't mind mentioning him, Andrew Cavides is actually here in the gallery. And so that collaborative reference group, which was comprised of, I believe, fourteen people who actually put their hands up to look at this issue, one of their recommendations was that we actually have bike lanes. We then went on to have deliberations where council decided that this shouldn't be public consultation. And following that, we actually worked on, a number of people in the community worked on coming back to council and asking for public consultation, which in November two thousand and sixteen, council decided on that public consultation after several hundred people actually put in petition. So we're actually looking at a situation where we have received evidence from experts, from a collaborative reference group, and now we have actually received back from the consultation that the majority of those people who actually put in a representation believe that there should be bike lanes. I find it really difficult to understand the recommendation, the recommendation for option one. When you put it all together, all of those aspects that we've looked at over the years, this isn't just about that there were a majority of those representatives saying that option two should actually prevail. I'm looking at all of the evidence and the consultation is another piece of evidence to me. It's an important piece of evidence, it's not the only one I'm relying on. Therefore, I cannot support option one over option two because option two, I need to remind you, would actually include all of those aspects of option one plus the bike lane. Thank you.
Um, I too don't agree with option one. The whole justification in two thousand and ten, which is seven years ago, for this Clarence Street safety assessment, which this report on the table is seeking our support for, was looking at the safety of cyclists and the inclusion of bike lanes. I know that there has been some difficulties for some members of the council and the public at looking at the parking and bike lanes. However, as Alderman von Gertoe talked about initially, there is another option called channelisation, which looks at the line marking of the road where cars are being parked. Now, within the state government road safety strategy two thousand and seventeen to nineteen, they give the officers in section five, oh, page five, dot point nine, as being a road safety option. So it's not talking about bike lanes, however, it is giving a risk assessment option to a very busy road. This road has over thirty thousand car movements a day. Within the context of that, I would have liked to have seen my children be able to ride a bike to school, however, I would never guarantee their safety on that road and so they went to school on skateboard. Within the context of the issues that we've looked at over the past few years, this has come a long way to today for this assessment to be finally at this table. And I think that we as a council have a duty of care to the cyclists, whether that's two, twenty or two hundred is irrelevant. Cyclists have a right to an ability to feel less at risk on this busy road if we can provide an option to give that to them. So in this context, I don't endorse option one and I would like to see us reconsider option B and again with my own personal preference, which is the channelisation.
Mr. Mayor, look, Alderman Kusick said when he opened the debate that there is enough room for cycle lanes on Clarence Street. I disagree with that statement. There is limited room on Clarence Street, I agree with that, but the question is what the trade-off is and there would be a trade-off with cycle lanes. The trade-off is the elimination of on-street parking, potentially on one side of the street, be a different side at different points. And so that then begs the question, is the trade-off worth it? And to my mind, the trade-off is worth it. The reason I say that is because if you look at the utilisation of... The reason I say that is because if you look at the utilisation of on-street parking, yes, there are houses at the front end of the street, despite the fact that this is for all intents and purposes an arterial road, but at the same time, when you're looking at the question of safety for cyclists versus that immunity, I think the trade-off is worth it because on-street parking is fairly underutilised anyway. On-street parking appears to be utilised for primarily a couple of things. One of them is the number of people park their cars on the street all through the day to advertise and to sell. There are also cars that are parked there that are visiting residents of the line of Clarence Street. And when I've driven down the street and I've seen, you know, visitors parking and on-street parking outside people's houses, I've noticed that there's still space in the driveways. I believe that, you know, if on-street parking is eliminated on one side of the street, there are alternative arrangements available, people can park in side streets, they can make arrangements before they visit people in the street to park in their driveways. I don't see that that on-street parking is of such great value in Clarence Street that it's really that badly needed on both sides along the entire street. This is, as I said, an arterial road, and I think we have a great opportunity here. Now, people have mentioned the number of cyclists that go down the street, and I've seen the figures, I've seen the count, but I think that we would encourage more cyclists if we provided the infrastructure there, if we provided safety for cyclists. And I think safety for cyclists is certainly a big issue, and by providing that, we would encourage more use of this sustainable form of transport. So I am going to join with Alderman McFarlane and Alderman Von Berto in opposing the motion. I'd like to see if neither of those colleagues of mine will be foreshadowing a motion to adopt option two, then I'd certainly like to foreshadow as such.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, I'm a little confused with what we're actually recommending here, because if I look at this and just look at this as it stands, I'm happy to support A, because I'm after safety improvement, and B is to improve safety to cyclists at the lighted intersections only, it's not about providing. I know, but there's been people referencing an option two, and I don't know where that comes into this. I know, but that's nowhere in this recommendation, and this is what we're voting on. So if, in my mind, if I want to support option two, I don't vote for this, is that what happens? Correct. Be an alternative motion, correct? For be an alternative motion. Well, I'm sort of a bit...
If you voted against this one, because...
And when are we voting on option two?
If this is unsuccessful.
Thank you. Just on the material that I've read this afternoon, and sort of trying to get some background on it, I'm really happy about the fact that improvements are going to be made at the lighted intersections, because I understand that's the area of greatest risk for cyclists. So if we're addressing that, we're also addressing the safety issue, I think this is a good progression towards seeing how this is handled by the public. At the same time, it's not interfering with those residents who would lose all of their parking along Clarence Street, and the idea of there being some one side, one side, I think the decision eventually, one day, will have to be no on-street parking at all, as otherwise this is quite confusing. So I'm happy to support this recommendation as it stands now, with the view that in the future, and I have asked that question of Mr Graham, in relation to the way this would be set up, would it be conducive to further changes down the track? And I think I've been satisfied that that's quite possible.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It took two cracks to get this out to public consultation. I supported the first attempt, and I supported the second attempt, and I believe council's better for that, and I believe that to date, or to this minute, and I can always bring it down, but to this instant, the quality of debate tonight, as we've discussed this, has been at a higher level than those two other previous instances. As Alderman Hume, Mr Mayor, has pointed out, this is about trade-offs and about thresholds, and this is what's agonised me, the trade-off of wanting to enable cycling versus, in this instance, on this arterial road, what those trade-offs might be. There's the parking components, there's the reduction in speed components, they all have to be brought together, and I've gone through the officers' report, and I am now siding with the officers, having read through it. There is a degree of stenosis, arterial stenosis, if you like, with option two, and I have to weigh up all things and put them together, conscious of my position as a proxy in the cycling committee, but I have to weigh all things up, and I am falling on the side that the officers' recommendations are the way forward.
Last year, I've taken account on many occasions up here, and I've accounted on forty-four occasions. And there's only saw three dimes, three dimes in that time, whole time, that's one issue. And on the other times, I've counted cars near there, there's always been a minimum in any of that forty-four council, a minimum of ten, up to an actual twenty cars parked along there, and just to make a comparison. There is a whole one, there are a lot of them, as far as I'm aware. There's a new bike path being constructed between the Carst Road and Oshar Drive, and I regularly see, or occasionally, pushbikes riding on the highway, so where do we go? You know, it's just arrogance, that is, and it's not necessary. And we've got a bike path around the Porch Shore, it gets slow, and the other thing, despite
I'd like to continue, Alderman Campbell. I've wired the system up. Please try and carry it down a little bit. A little pull down a little bit. Yet simply, there is not enough lane room for lanes there. We've got two distance widths in Clarence Street, between Cambridge Road and Wentworth Street, and the balance is more on the eastern end of the road, but overall, simply, there is just not enough. You can't orchestrate it, you can't piddle, you just cannot make that fit. I've done enough, and I was going to bring papers in, so you could understand what measuring up things does, but you can't do it. And I'm a hundred per cent for the safety features, they need to be done, they're important, and I hope that there's sufficient support for the recommendation. Thanks, Alderman Campbell. Other speakers? Right, a reply, Alderman Cusick?
Alderman Von Berto mentioned public consultation, there was public consultation. The majority of those in favour reside in places other than the immediate vicinity. Majority of Clarence Street residents who responded do not want bike lanes. There is a path behind the beach, as Alderman Campbell mentioned. Suggested alternate, Alderman Hume, or alternate parking, I believe is very dangerous, when people, old, young, have to park opposite their home or where they're visiting, and then cross the road, and I thought we had fifteen thousand movement today, Alderman McFarlane said thirty thousand movement today, it's extremely dangerous, and, I mean, it's a bit of, you know, I believe that putting bike lanes there is just not practical, and I urge council support for the motion.
Motion before the Chair is A, that council supports option one. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried, so we move to item B, to improve the safety to cyclists at the highlight, at the lighted intersections, provide bicycle standing lines at the four lighted intersections. Thanks, Alderman James, the second one. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman James, would you like to speak to that?
I'll be brief, Mr Mayor. The question of having lighted intersections is an important matter in relation to safety, and it would, as the officers have spelled out in the report, that it would go a long way towards reducing any possible problems and the impact on the actual cyclists at those points of intersection. I see councillors support.
Motion speaks for itself, Mr Mayor. I see councillors support.
I support part B, the recommendation, in that it does do something positive in terms of providing safety for cyclists, and for also encouraging cycling. Having, yeah, supported option two rather than the previous part A of the recommendation, I actually think we could have done better for them, but, you know, at least this is something that will improve safety for cyclists and encourage adoption of cycling on Clarence Street, encourage more people to engage in sustainable transport.
I too support recommendation B, however, it's a poor second to actually considering the cycling safety of residents getting from one lighted intersection to another, regardless of whether it's day or night.
Yes. Mayor, I also support option B. I think after option one was moved, passed, I usually think you can't improve or support option B, because at least it does give some safety, may not be completely what you want, but it certainly does add some safety to it.
Von Berto?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'm pleased to hear that so far, all of the Aldermen who have spoken are actually going to support part B. I think it's really important, when we're looking at the safety of cyclists, on the road, to actually note that commuter cyclists actually take the shortest route. So the idea that there is actually an option on the Porch Shore Trail for commuter cyclists is a little bit of a first thing, because commuter cyclists will not use the longer route, they will use the shortest possible route to get to where they are wanting to go. And I think it's important to also note that the idea of that some of the people who actually put in a representation were from outside of the Clarence Street area, yes, of course they were, because they are commuter cyclists, moving from one part of Clarence through to another part, and perhaps to Hobart. In relation to safety, I think it's really also important to note that a lot of women feel very uncomfortable about riding on the road, and if there were bike lanes, and I'm pleased to actually hear that there will be, by the looks of it, in terms of the numbers that gathering will support this, there will be the safety, if you like, cycling standing lines at the lighted intersections, because that will actually help to improve women's confidence. Women, much more so than men, find road riding difficult. They would like to ride on the road, and therefore we would have a lot more commuter cyclists if we provided bike lanes that will win, not the bike lanes. So with that in mind, I really urge all of the Aldermen to support part B. Thank you.
I reply, Alderman James. So the motion is part B, all those in favour? Carried unanimously.
No, I'm just standing. No one can say that I'm not standing. I am standing. Hard to say that I'm not standing, Alderman James.
Item eleven point seven governance, eleven point seven point one, voluntary amalgamations. I do propose to deal these ad seriatum, so we'll deal with item A first, which relates to the Greater Hobart SGS study. Alderman Walker, I believe that you'd like to move.
I believe I'm standing, Mr Mayor.
Do we have a second to please?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to actually, could you let me, can you let me actually say what I'm saying?
Certainly.
Yeah, I intend to move, and I know that it's meant to be handled ad seriatum, I intend to move an alternate motion to part A. I've read it out, I think Alderman Von Berto has copies of it, so she'll circulate it, but I'll read out the alternate while that's happening. Part A, that council receives and notes the SGS final feasibility report, Greater Hobart Local Government Reform, that council includes all the options listed by SGS in any community consultation process conducted by council into voluntary mergers, these consultation documents are to be drafted to include the strengths and weaknesses for the Clarence community of each option listed by SGS. Furthermore, the consultation information is to overview each option's adherence to the Minister for Local Government's guiding principles for voluntary amalgamations. Point three, that council determines option three, as identified in the SGS report, that's being a strategic alliance of the four councils, Clarence, Glenorkie, Hobart and Kingborough, is the current preferred option, and would be compatible with also pursuing any option identified in the KPMG South East Councils feasibility study. Four, the council advised the Minister for Local Government and Hobart, Kingborough and Glenorkie councils accordingly. Five, that the general manager be requested to report back to council as a matter of priority in relation to the proposed format and content of the community consultation package.
So, I've been, we've just been given this, and that's a pretty long readout. Can I suggest to the adjourn for a couple of minutes to let people actually digest this, and understand what it is, rather than taking it, the heat of the debate, without having the opportunity to understand it?
It's not nice to feel somersaulted, I understand that, I got a report on Thursday, I felt that way, so, yes, two to three minutes. I had to draft it today.
So, look, it has been tabled, it is moved and seconded. Moved, Alderman Walker, seconded, Alderman McFarlane, was it? Alderman Hume, sorry. So that's adjourned for five minutes, so the people can actually read this and give it some thought. Hey, Alderman Walker, I'll resume the meeting and call upon you to speak to the motion, please.
Yes, I've read it out once, so I won't read out the bike lanes again, I believe you've now read those. Look, I move this motion not in support of the SGS findings around the Greater Hobart, or in praise of their process of conducting the study. I do so because we endeavoured to work with any neighbouring council willing to work with us in any of the merger reform process. This process has been expensive and time-consuming. It has been misreported by the wider comment... It has been misreported by the wider comment areas and certain vested interests in the corporate welfare sector that the SGS report delivers benefits in the many millions of hold. Now, these benefits are, one, ephemeral, they're the ideas that you make everybody live on top of each other in the CBD and they're saving good commuting time. This report did actually show that it would be, you know, potentially a more expensive operation, the combined, in fact, it did show that was the case. But we haven't adequately talked about that. We haven't actually put that out in a fair manner. And, you know, you only have to read the paper that Sunday, it has yesterday, there are still very strong feelings that the Greater Hobart Council is the way to go. They're not feelings I have, they're not feelings that are supported by the findings of the SGS report, but for us to have gone to all that time and effort and to not let the community be having a say on it if we're going out to do that anyway, to me, just is inappropriate. And I'll put some of the reasons down here. You know, council entered into the lead discussions around the voluntary merger process without prejudice, willingness to talk with other councils, that it's an opportunity to really talk up the benefit of the strategic alliance as the preferred position at this time, in particularly around the principle of being in the interest of ratepayers. I think if we don't do that, if it's currently had the, as reported, that we got late, the report that says we just do that, I think it just looks like we're running scared and we're putting that on as a fig leaf. There's actually very good reasons why the strategic alliance is better and as part of the consultation process, we can lead with our chin on that front. And I do want to make note of the other points, but in recent times, there has been an increase in community sentiment that council is not adequately consulting with the Clarence community of matters of strategic importance. It's up to us to do so and we've put so much time into this process that this is a mechanism that will enable it. So I'm not saying we're going out with this as our preferred thing, I'm saying if we're going to go out for the effort and time, consulting with the community, especially around the second bit that was reported, that we should actually let them have a say on the other report and we should spend the time doing a document that talks through the options that we're in.
Second, Alderman Hume?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Alderman Walker has made the point in previous council meetings and in workshops that when it comes to voluntary amalgamations, that this is possibly, for the, for the time that we've spent on here, whether we've been here for three years in my case, or a number of decades in the case of other Aldermen, that this could possibly be one of the greatest and if not the greatest, the most important decision that we can make as a council. And I think what's important and what Alderman Walker is putting forward is, we're not, we're not squibbing this, we're not saying we're not going to take leadership on this. We are putting forward a preferred option and I think there's very good reasons why the strategic alliance is the best option when it comes to the Greater Hobart study. But on what is the most important decision we could potentially make as a council in a long time, it's something that I think we need to bring the community with us. And I don't think that our community would take kindly to the decision with the importance of this, with the strategic importance of this and with the gravity of this, of saying, we have made this decision on your behalf when it comes to the question of the potential amalgamation options within the Greater Hobart area. Of course, we have a preferred position, we have very good reasons for a preferred position, we've discussed that extensively with our workshops, but let's bring the community with us on that decision. Let's not, let's not treat them as mugs and say, well, we have the wisdom to make this decision on your behalf, but we're not going to bring you with us. And that's why I support going out to consultation on this. Because I, and I don't see that we're in a hurry necessarily to make this decision, a decision of this gravity, there's no rush into it. I think, I think we can benefit from taking the time to consult, to provide the information and to say, hey, this is our, this is our preference, we're going to bring you along with us on this decision.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
I will not support the motion before the chair and Alderman Walker made the comment that it's been an expensive and a time-consuming exercise, and it has, it has. And by dragging this out, as he's proposing to do so, by allowing this to go out to community consultation, is really going to defeat the whole purpose of what the officers have recommended in their recommendation that's before us on the council agenda this evening. It's an important decision, yes, but, and Alderman, I'll mention about that we're not taking the leadership role here unless we do just that and go out to public consultation. There have been identified, and I haven't been to the meetings, those workshops, where there are certain flaws in the SGS report. And it sort of stems from what the sums do not tell us in relation to Glenorkie, Hobart, Clarence and Kingborough. So on that basis, we, we should not necessarily dismiss the SGS report because in the officer's recommendation, it says, and we've already read it, that we should seek that alliance, strategic alliance. And that's actually option three that was, sorry, that was what was actually spelled out by SGS as part of their process of having that strategic alliance. And so, look, we are not dismissing SGS or deciding to say, look, we, we're not taking on board the actual results of the SGS report. But at the same time, we should be decision makers and have taken into account the debate that has gone on with regard to Glenorkie, Hobart, Kingborough and Clarence and not proceed to go to consultation on it. I think we can keep our heads up in the debate by saying, yes, look, let's go with the strategic alliance because we should be working, and even Daniel Hall mentioned earlier, when I asked the question about, what did I say, Hugh, did I, anyway, asked a question about, it needs to be a Greater Hobart sort of involvement here. And the strategic alliance does just that. It makes sure that we work together with Hobart, Glenorkie, Kingborough and Clarence to achieve some of these important objectives. So, look, I, I do not support the question of, of going out to consultation. I believe that the officer's recommendation, part A, one and two, hit the nail right on the head and I will be suggesting or putting forward that proposal, which is not supported by the council.
I mean, Alderman Walker said, oh, we spent a lot of money. That's no reason to spend more money and time on the SGS report. And to say we should explore this further is more money and time, we should be using our time and our energy productively. Alderman Hume says, oh, we've got lots of time, it's been, what's it been, a year? I mean, it's a long time. Elected people get bad reputations. We're elected to make a decision. We review the SGS report, it does not show Clarence residents we're better off, in fact, they'll be worse off financially. We also know Kingborough have voted unanimously to merge, or want to merge with you all valley. The strategic alliance is second only to the four council merger. If the four council merger, and Glenorkie's obviously doubtful, and Kingborough said they don't want to merge with us, the strategic alliance is the best option, which has been recommended by the, by the officers. I think we're elected to make decisions and we should get on with it, make a decision and move on.
I could just enter the debate at this point, just very briefly, so that others can comment as well. I can understand where you're coming from and desire to consult widely as possible on this very important decision, but it would give me some trouble, all the options, I think, or almost all the options, and you might like to comment on this, invoke Glenorkie. And Glenorkie has been taken out of the game by the minister until at least the next election. And therefore, I think it would be wrong of us to invite the community to consult, to consult and advise us on the desirability of merging with, for example, Glenorkie if they're no longer in the game. You might like to comment that in your rider reply. Other speakers? Alderman Derry?
Mr Mayor, I'm, I'm going to support the officer's recommendation. There is a part of me that would like to see the decision in relation to the strategic alliance put out there to the public for comment, but I don't agree with the detail in Alderman Walker's suggestion. There's far too much detail that's going out to the public, which would absolutely create mayhem for some. The, the reality is with any public consultation, you have to be careful and strategic in the, in the responses that you, that you get back. And you have to be in a position to be able to deal with those responses. The more information you put out that can actually create confusion rather than clarification, troubles me. So I think it's, it needs to be kept simple, I think it needs to be, this is the stance council has taken, we invite your comments. Now, those comments will come without providing so much detail. Those comments will come because they will, they will create somebody having an alternate view and that's what you're seeking. Most people may say, we want the status quo, which is no change at all. What are you going to do with that if the majority of respondents say we don't want to change at all? You just have to be careful what, what you wish for and I would prefer to, to go with the officer's recommendation and actually prefer to keep it a bit more simple. We've devoted far too much, this is going round and round and round and I, I know that I'm a person that likes quick decisions, I don't like procrastination. I'm a little frustrated by the whole level of debate that's gone around it. That's my position.
I mean, can I ask, Alderman Walker? What he's saying here, as I can see, is he says, we should identify all the options, look at their strengths and weaknesses and then have a, a community consultation package. I think there are three basic things that I perceive within his report here, or I mean his motion, and I can't see anything wrong with consulting with the, all we're doing is asking the community what they think. And to have a variety to say, well, we're not going to consult with anyone on certain options, I don't think should, our position is there.
Other speakers? Alderman Tares?
Mayor, I was quite happy with the officer's recommendation in talking to Alderman Walker and others. I actually find nothing wrong with Alderman Walker's motion. Now, simply we've, we've been, Alderman are right, we've been through this and we've had report after report, and a lot of people, the average rate payer wouldn't have a clue how much time we've spent on this, but jeez, we've spent a hell of a lot. So to give them more information about what we, what we are thinking and what's been in these reports, because there's quite a few of them, I don't think that's harmful at all. Now, the fact is, I think most of us agree that probably strategic alliance with the four Western Shore councils is, three Western Shore councils probably better, but Mayor, you raise a question of Glenorkie, but on our boundary, Glenorkie is, right there, across the Balm Bridge, it's right there, we like it or not. Regardless of what happens with the administration, if it goes, if Glenorkie still survives or the council is sacked, whatever, it's still an option. So I see nothing wrong with asking people. A lot of people seem to think that bigger will save us money, well, these reports show that's not true and a lot of cases it is not true. And naturally, if you read a lot of Professor Dogory stuff, amalgamations cost money, it costs money. So if you give it to the ratepayers to decide if it's going to cost them money, it's on them, it's on them. Because I'm sure they're not going to read the amount of reports and spend the amount of time that we have, but I do believe they do deserve a say.
Other speakers? Alderman Charles?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, it's a vexed decision, I have to say, and, and I couldn't add up the number of hours that, that we collectively have spent reading these reports, attending meetings, talking about them and, and often going round in circles, it has to be said. But I think on reflection, I am going to support the officer's recommendation. And I have two main reasons, I think, for that. Firstly, as you mentioned earlier, I don't see the point of going out to consultation on anything currently that involves Glenorkie. It seems counterproductive to put those into the mix when any answer that, if, if that came out as the preferred answer, it's not possible. So it does seem silly to go, to go out with potential options that, that may come up with that answer. Secondly, as I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wish anybody having to try and sort their way through the amount of reading we have and trying to work out what are the best options. I think we have taken a long time to come to the conclusion that an amalgamation on the, on Greater Hobart doesn't make sense and that a strategic alliance does. I think we can justify that decision to anybody in the community and I think we need to make that decision and be sure that we can justify it. So I will be supporting the officer's recommendation, not the alternative.
Pardon?
I too support Alderman Walker's motion in the context that once again, with community consultation, I think that we need to put it on the table. However, I understand the fears of the amount of information that was made available to us and the difficulty we had in sorting it through, the, the report that we were given that we were not happy with. And so in that context, I believe that Alderman Walker's concept of putting forward all options with the strengths and weaknesses lined up and then our preferred position as an explanation of why, and, and an explanation of why we've come to that, will ameliorate a large percentage of difficulty within the community in comprehending what we had to go through. There will be some who will want to actually read the report and we should have some of that available to them. And I believe that their ability to come, to understand the difficulties that we've had, if they bothered to read it, they'll come to the same conclusion. We have a highly educated community, I think this time, considering it's such a large decision that can affect so many people's lives, we should go out to consultation.
Pardon? Mr Mayor, what Alderman Walker's proposed is, is a good summary of the situation, but it doesn't take us anywhere, as has been said. If we're going to go out to consultation, it's got to be simple, simple so the public understand. It's no good having some long, convoluted regime that they don't understand. And we just need to, it just complicates the issue and will confuse them even more. And the whole thing, through all the time, all the effort that's gone into it, we're not focusing on our core business. That's the sad thing about this whole thing. And some of you, if you'd been in business, you would have gone broke by now, procrastination and so on.
I'd like to name up that I was pretty brave in 2014 when we had the council election and I actually read back over my election brochure and hundred and fifty words and in that I said that I supported Clarence remaining separate to the Western Shore Council. So I just want to name that up initially. However, I'm supporting Alderman Walker's motion and I'm supporting it for a number of different reasons. First one is that we actually have a strategic plan that mentions community, a community participation policy and that we need to abide by that. The second is that we actually have some information, or we have had for quite a while, some information from the minister. The first document that we had from the minister The first document that we had from the minister that was provided to us when Alderman and the general manager went to a meeting with the minister for local government, that was on the 11th of February 2015. In that meeting, he actually provided two documents which detailed a process. And that process actually included undertaking feasibility, feasibility studies and conducting community consultation. They were actually together. So the way that I read this is that having undertaken, been involved in two feasibility studies, we are obliged to actually undertake community consultation. Now, I know that the general manager, at my asking, actually followed up with the director of local government, and that may not necessarily be the case. But I'm looking at these documents and that's how I read them. And then a following letter came from the minister on the 19th of February, once again, providing a process and detailing the aspect of feasibility studies and community consultation going together. And my understanding is that that process actually came from a very detailed report that was done by the Local Government Division, the Local Government Board actually, in 2010, which is entitled Principal Voluntary Mergers Report. And once again, there it was made very clear that a feasibility study actually involved community consultation. So there are a number of strategic reasons to me why we actually need to undertake community consultation in relation to both feasibility studies. And in relation to this particular one, all of the options. I actually, as we're in the parlance, we have an educated ratepayer base, ratepayer and resident base, and I actually believe that we can develop a consultation that is actually easily readable and understandable. So I think that's really important. I'll bring up the issue too about timeframe and also about cost. Timeframe, yes, there was a timeframe put forward by the minister in 2015. We are two years behind in that timeframe. So I don't think the timeframe is an issue. We need to look at this and get it right. To my way of thinking, tonight is not about making a decision as to which option we go for, which feasibility study option, because you've got two feasibility studies with a number of options in each. It's not about that. Tonight is about public consultation. It is about providing the public with an opportunity to comment. And to my way of thinking, I actually have a number of important aspects to weigh up. I have the feasibility study. I also have a confidential peer review, and I want to actually know and get a feel for what the community is thinking in relation to this feasibility study and in relation to the Greater South East one.
Thank you, Alderman Bonberto.
That is why I would vote for Alderman Walker.
Alderman Walker, would you like to sum up, please?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Look, this isn't about delaying the timeframe. This is about a concurrent consultation process. What might be the burden, or the burden might be on our officers just having to work a little bit harder and make a report that covers all options? That's, that's the burden. But the actual timeline is exactly the same. Now, Alderman James, Mr. Mayor, he did report that the SGS report had flaws. Might be unkind to say more flaws than the Empire State Building, that's what I'm not saying. And what I would say is that it's really important that by going out, we can actually talk this through, not be seen to bolting something down, reacting in self-interest because we like one more than the other, but to actually expose and talk through these things. And that's what this will do. And again, we, part of that is talking up the benefits of the strategic alliance, because people are sick of hearing councils say, oh, shared services, oh, strategic alliance. There is a benefit here, and we don't want to be seen to be running, we need to explain and sell the benefits of it, and especially around issues of planning and especially around experts of transport. Now, uh, I've covered the time components. Um, yeah, and then Mr. Mayor has, has made queries about, well, how can we talk when, you know, about Glanorki and that being in, you know, administration and they can't make a decision? This community consultation is not directive, it's not vox pop decision making, it's an information gathering process. And it may well come back that 70% have a view on something, but if we fundamentally have concerns with that, we're not obliged to follow it. But we are obliged to listen, we are obliged to understand where people are coming from, and plenty of academics, plenty of people in the corporate welfare sector, unfortunately, are thinking that Greater Hobart is the best way to go. And we are aware of flaws, and we can talk about those flaws through this process. Um, other comments that have come around are this idea, this infantilization of the ratepayers that work their backsides off to pay their rates on time. I believe people are very interested in the community and the future that they live in, and I believe that many people will take an interest. Many might not, but this is about giving people choice, not about taking away, not about saying, team Alderman, no best, and this is the choice, the, you know, the Henry Ford approach of any amalgamation you want, as long as it's option three on the Southeast study. That's not the way to go. That is not the way to go. And I hear other comments, Mr. Mayor, it was reported, uh, Mr. Mayor, by, uh, by the deputy mayor, that this thing has to be simple, simple, simple. Well, to me, simple, simple, simple is describing wards as little abstract circles on a map. Quite frankly, that's too simple. That is condescending. That's not the way to do it. Distill the data, put the perspective of how each model is in the benefit or the detriment of Clarence ratepayers, talk it through. It's not going to add to the timeframe because we're doing it concurrently with any Southeast study. And I make this point, if there aren't seven people that support this around the table, it's lost. But if the officer's recommendation comes across and there aren't seven people across the table, it's lost. And I can stay here all night voting one way or the other.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Uh, so the motion is, before the chair is Alderman Walker, as circled, all those in The motion is lost, six all. Alderman James, I think you foreshadowed the officer's recommendation.
Yeah, I'll move the officer's recommendation, uh, which is part A.
Do we have a secondor? Uh, Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman Wa, uh, Alderman James, would you like to speak?
I think, as the mayor, there has been enough discussion, I believe, so I'll seek council's support.
Alderman Cusick. Other speakers. Alderman Hearn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will not be, uh, supporting the officer's recommendation. I, I do so on the basis that, um, I think that we need to keep open the option of further consultation, and if that means, uh, voting against the motion, um, and if six others join in me, then that's something we will need to discuss further, we'll need to give it more consideration and, and come to a, uh, come to a conclusion at a later date. I don't understand what the hurry is. Um, you know, when we're talking about, uh, you know, needing to make a decision soon, I, I don't see why we need to rush into it. Um, I take Alderman Bonberto's comment that, uh, you know, we're, we're two years behind the timeline that's been set by the Minister for Local Government anyway. Um, it's more important that we take the time to get it right than, than we get it done, uh, in a hurry. Um, I, I find it interesting that, uh, um, Alderman James, uh, you know, in his contribution, um, you know, saying, uh, consultation isn't necessary, one another occasion sees deployed, uh, you know, lack of consultation in other areas. And, and like I've said before, this is a decision of much greater gravity than the ones he was referring to. Um, in relation to the comments of putting all options on the table, it begs the question, how is that different to the approach that's suggested in the officer's recommendation on the Southeast amalgamation? We are, if we go with that recommendation, putting forward a preferred option, going out to consultation, but there is nothing, as with this consultation, if we went ahead with it, to stop our residents and ratepayers putting forward a view on any of the options. Um, so I, I, I don't see how it's, how it's different in any way. And what's the argument for going out to consultation on the Southeast merger and the options there and not going out to consultation on Greater Hobart? Now, Alderman Bonberto, I think, made the point very eloquently, um, that consultation was actually part of the process. Um, it's not part of the process, should we choose, uh, as a council, not, not to proceed, um, you know, with an option or to proceed with the status quo or to, um, or to proceed with the strategic alliance rather than any amalgamation options. It is a part of the process, should we decide to explore amalgamations in any area, um, to go out to community consultation, because it is a decision of such gravity. Um, and we could get out of the community consultation some very valuable information about what sort of form a strategic alliance would take, should our residents and ratepayers prefer that option. Um, so I, I wouldn't mind, uh, if, you know, if, if this motion now to adopt the officer's recommendation, uh, goes down six all, I wouldn't mind deferring it and having some further discussion about the approach that we take. Um, because I, I think we do need, as a council, to debate the merits of consultation. Now, I understand there may be some concern with, um, uh, the amount of notice that Alderman Walker's motion has come up with. Um, that to me doesn't, um, uh, deny the, the merits of the motion, uh, but having said that, you know, the, the, the report, um, and recommendations have, uh, come up with not a lot of notice either, um, I, I don't see that there's any, um, anything to be lost by, uh, taking the time to give this a bit more consideration when we're talking about the decision of such importance and such gravity.
Um, with your advice, Mr. Mayor, is there a time when we could put a procedural motion to defer this topic and take it to a motion?
Well, we can do that, uh, Peppleman, do that anytime they like.
I'd like to do that.
Is there a secondor that, uh, the motion be deferred so that we don't continue this particular discussion? Secondor? Being a procedural motion, all those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Alderman Farley.
Sarah, it, it's up to us, um, as a council, to be kept abreast of the changes that are occurring out there in the local government field. And so what's happened with the Greater Hobart, um, feasibility study, um, is the fact that there's certain things that have happened in the background. Glanorki's, um, not in a, in a position to be included at this stage. We may hear that Kimbra wants to align with Huen. We didn't have an option in that particular one for Hobart and Clarence, which to me was the best option anyway. But that option is not even there, so that even can't, that can't go out. So what are, what are we putting out there? Things that actually probably can't even actually happen because the context that we've been operating in for the last two years has changed since the time that we started this. Things have happened and, uh, things have progressed in the local government field. So is it fair on the public to actually put options out there, pros and cons, of things that may not even be possible to exist because the context of which we're operating now has changed? That could be considered a waste of time, and that could also be putting false aspirations out there. What we're aiming to do is actually formulate a strategic alliance based on the knowledge that we have in, in, um, the current context, and that is a really, really sensible option. It's a really, really good decision, and it's something that we all agree is really, really necessary. The other, um, with the, if, um, the Southeast, um, to actually put out our, our preferred position, doesn't mean that community consultation's not happening. It's, it's actually inviting community consultation based on that. It's not saying don't contribute, but use your imagination. But we don't have to actually spell it out so you actually have to comment on every single thing. So this could lead to the comments, um, as I said before, let's leave it at the status quo, or we don't agree with, or, um, Sarell and Tasman and Clarence or Gomorvin Spring Bay. So I think to say we're denying public consultation is a really, um, overexaggeration of what's occurring here. We are after public consultation, but we're just not going to burden with overcomplication. And this, um, I support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. Here at my time on this council, I've been a councillor, then when we became a city, I became an Alderman. And the fact is, with all this consultation, it could merge and could do this, strategic alliances, the fact is, if the Clarence Council disappears by way of a merger, and I use the word Clarence Council, disappears, the name disappears because we merge with some other council, and I did so, would have a, a new name. I want the ratepayer, payers of Clarence to tell me that. I don't want to guess it, I want them to tell me and say, no, we want to get rid of Clarence. We want you to merge, we want you to go with Hobart wherever. But I think they've got the right to say that. If they want Clarence to maintain as it is today, they'll also tell us that. So I think we've just given them the opportunity on this council's destiny and possibly other council's destiny. But let's give them the chance.
Walker. Yeah, I'm not going to support the officer's recommendations. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent on the SGS report. And what this is planning is a quick knife in the back street, put it away, it never happened, ladies and gentlemen, um, strategic alliance over here. We'll talk about the strategic alliance. But if we're going to be spending dollars going out to consultation, which I believe will happen around the Southeast, this would happen concurrently. This would happen concurrently if you included all the work that has been done in Hobart. And we're doing our job right when we go out. A, we'll be leading with our chin and talking up why the strategic alliance in this instance makes sense, and B, noting all the points around maybe the Huen and Kimbra love fest or the wealth that is Glanorki. That would be part of an officer doing their job when they report, when they do that report. It should be talking about the pros and cons and then the situation at the moment and the likelihood around it. That is what giving our community informed choice is around, not infantilized faux-choice where it's any merger you want, as long as it's this one. Because there are a variety of options, and as I keep repeating, I'm done, there are a lot of flaws with the SGS. I don't believe it's in the best interest of this community, but while there is public debate around that, then we should be actively engaging in it, and we should be explaining that that hundreds of millions of dollars of benefits aren't actually going to accrue to any new council, but it's ephemeral. And we need to put that out there. So if this is six all, I'm more than happy to put my motion again. I can stay here all night putting it in BP, but that is what I will be doing if this ends up six all.
Other speakers. Alderman Bonberto.
Mr. Mayor, I can't support the officer's recommendation, and obviously I've been through my thoughts, but I really feel that it is beholden on us to, one, consult, for all the reasons that I've said, but two, to consult on all of the options that SGS have provided to us in their report. And I think that is the crux of the matter, so I will not be supporting the officer's
Sorry, Alderman Bonberto. I can offer you extra time. All right, are there other speakers? Alderman Farley. Oh, I think, I've got you reported as speaking on this already. You, you move the proceedings, all right, okay?
I too don't support the officer's recommendation in the sense that, in its own way, it actually leads the community into an outcome. Again, with such an important, um, decision to be made, it should be made by the people, and their input into our decision-making has not occurred, and we need to have that across all of the options so that we can weigh up. And we need to have that across all of the options so that we can weigh up why we came to our decisions as we went through the SG report and so then we can actually balance our decision making between our own, where we came to from one particular document plus our own personal discussion and then adding in the community. Again, within our community, we have a large number of educated people who will be looking at other things like Alderman Peers was talking about, the character of Clarence and do we want to lose that name? Or the justification of not actually saving any money? Or they will be able to read that document without any problems at all. So I look forward to communication with the community that gives them all of those options we talked about before, the strengths and weaknesses, our preferred positions and our reasons why we came to that.
Alderman James?
Eric, it has been agreed to tonight that there are certain flaws in the SGS report. It's been admitted by everybody just about who's spoken in the debate this evening. And also too, there has been a considerable amount of money spent, not only on the SGS report, but also on the KPMG and also on the peer review report. And so the role of elected aldermen within the city of Clarence is to weigh up the process as to whether it should go out to consultation, that's the SGS report, or whether the stewardship of the city of Clarence is able to assess the situation in relation to the SGS report and say, look, we need to make a decision here because it just doesn't add up in relation to the SGS report. It doesn't give benefits in the sense of giving a direct benefit to the people at Clarence. And that's been admitted in the SGS report. The consultation process, okay, we can go out to consultation and I've been an advocate for nearly 25 years in this plus, but at the same time, we need to be able to act responsibly and be able to assess the situation as to whether or not a report is going to deliver to the citizens of Clarence the best means or it's not. And I don't think the SGS report does that. And it doesn't, I think, indicate the reason for us to proceed to go out to consultation. It should be left with us as the custodians of the decision making process on this issue where the SGS report has not come up to scratch. And it's been admitted by everybody here and also from other people who have attended those workshop, those working meetings. I went to the opening of the Clarence District Cricket Club building on the occasion when it was opened down there on Kangaroo Bay and I sat with rank and file people in the community, people who really care about Clarence. There was a group of them at the table where I sat and they said, Richard, I called him Richard, Richard, do not let us become part of Hobart. Do not, do not let us become part of Hobart. We're better off being in on the eastern shore. And we didn't go into the detail about a southeastern council, but they were quite clear. We don't want to be part of Hobart or Ginnorkey or Kingborough. We want to be Clarence and that may mean part of the southeastern council, but that wasn't necessarily.
Thank you, Alderman James. Seek council support. The motion before the chair is part A, the officer's recommendation. All those in favour? Against? Okay, the motion's lost. I'd like to make a proposal here that in many ways, we're not too far apart. I actually sense the unanimous decision around the table to go out to consultation. It's a matter of what we're going out to consultation on. I also note that in Alderman Walker's motion at para three there, that he does identify council's current preferred option of being the strategic alliance. I think there is a wide expectation that we in the council are able to make a decision on this and I certainly have some sympathy with what Alderman Walker's trying to do in terms of getting people to understand maybe where we've landed at and the information ought to be available to them out there so they can understand, first of all, why our current preferred position is as it is and whether they can support that or not. So I'd like to suggest a very simple change to Alderman Walker's motion and obviously it depends on whether he's willing to take it on board or not, but in the interests of trying to get this moving forward, that in para two, that council explains in details all the options in the SGS report and then the rest of the report, the rest of the recommendations as it is. Alderman Walker, can I leave that thought with you? Otherwise, we're obviously not going to get very far on this issue tonight.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question to that? I mean, presumably anyone can take my really masterpiece here and plagiarise it just any way they wish, but if you were to use the term explain, that is not, that is going to be telling the community, that is going to be, if you like, a communication rather than a consultation. That is, that is the difference between explain and include.
It was explain and details. It was two words.
Yeah, yeah. Again, communicating with them on the Greater Hobart rather than putting it for them to have their say on these things.
Well, that's dead right and I think we've canvassed the issues around the table. So I don't know whether anyone's interested in moving the motion along those lines or not.
Look, we've made a decision in relation to part A. That's it. Don't have a, well, no, we haven't, sorry, we haven't made a decision. So why don't we go to part B?
Well, I'm attempting one last ditch effort at seeing if we can get somewhere on part A. So that's a suggestion I put out there to see if the council might be interested in that option.
Based on what the mayor has explained to council, I'd be prepared to move.
So the only, only change to Alderman Walker's motion is that in para two, the word includes all the options becomes explains and details all the options. Well, we have to be very careful. We are in a formal meeting sense. So I've got to move, you serve a second there. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman Campbell, do you want your perspective?
I think enough has been said about the two in front but all night and this is an old option.
Yeah, no, I think, I think if we can get the, the communication out to the people of Clarence, that the decision on from the Greater Hobart one was this and these are the reasons and document detail the reasons rather than actually ask for feedback. I think if they understand that this is the reason we've gone this way and here are the details of why we've gone this way.
This whole consultation process isn't a binding direction of council of what it must do. It is a dragnet of community opinion, insights, understanding, perception. That's what the process is about. Includes allows for that. It allows for those people that have those points of view and those that don't. Explains is basically the officer's recommendation in a new set of clothes. That's what it is. Includes is includes, explains is the other motion that didn't pass and I haven't changed my mind at this time.
Mr. Mayor, our community participation policy actually details the type of participation of the community. And one of those types is informing and by the changes that are being made now, that's what we do, do it, we're informing. Another type is actually consulting, getting their perspective on various options. And that is what I want. I want feedback. I want to get a feel from the community as to what they want in relation to the options that have been put to us by SGS. That's what I want. I don't want to inform them about what our preferred option is. Well, I do, but I don't want that to be the only thing. I want to get that from them. I want their feedback. I want to actually consult with them. So I cannot support the changes.
I don't think this breaks the deadlock because the deadlock is over the question of do we make a decision now on option three? Before we make that decision? And in what Alderman Walker put forward, we still put forward option three as our preferred position. We can still explain to the community why option three is our preferred position. But what the issue is about is on the decision of this importance, of this gravity, is giving the community the opportunity to come along on the journey with us to feel like and actually be in a way involved in the process rather than on what could be most likely the biggest decision of our careers as aldermen on this council, making a decision without involving them whatsoever. That's what the deadlock's about and that's what needs to be resolved. So no, I cannot support Alderman Campbell's motion.
I cannot support the motion. Oh, sorry. I haven't spoken on this. I spoke on the other two. You've probably got, you've probably got me on automatic.
Yeah, I just ticked you off prematurely.
Yes, I thought you had, you had. Mainly because this may be the biggest decision we're ever going to make, but at the end of the day, I think that we need to make a decision now rather than drag it out. Look, it can go on and on and on. You know, if we go out to consultation on this, you can, you can bet London to a brick that, that the time we prepare the questions, the surveys, we go out, then there's some probably objection to the way the questions are being prepared or, and so on. Look, it, it won't make one iota of a difference if we change the word from includes to explains because really explaining is just the, the whole question of, of what, what the options are and, and then what do you want to do? Have a checklist for them to come back to you and say, option, yes, no? It just doesn't make sense. Look, the numbers aren't there to actually, Mr. Mayor, to, to get anything up tonight. Look, if we don't make a decision on part A, then that's fine. That's fine. We move on because part A, if we don't make a decision on part A, that means we do not go down the course of whatever Alderman Walker has, has put up, alternatively what the officers have put up. So we are silent. We're, no, correct, no strategic alliance. So we go to part B and look at part B. Now, if part B is six all and is lost again, okay, then we are back basically where we started, what, two years ago? And okay, if that's the way the community are going to perceive this, they can say, well, the Clarence City Council can't make a decision and look, and look at them. Bring the minister in, okay, he'll make the decision because you can't make a decision for yourselves.
It's always a point of order. It's just to clarify exactly what the motion is that we're considering. So in point two, has Alderman Campbell's simply replaced includes with explains?
Explain some detail.
Okay. So, so if Alderman Campbell's motion is adopted, we will be going out to community consultation?
Absolutely.
And we won't be making a decision immediately on proceeding with option three?
Absolutely.
Right. Because I think I misunderstood. I thought it was that point two was simply explains all the options listed by SGS will stop.
I draw your attention to para five, the GMV inquiry report back to council. It's a matter of priorities in relation to proposed format and content of the community consultation package.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I actually misunderstood the motion. I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually comfortable with that.
Other speakers? Alderman Peers?
Mayor, we've got the words, once it includes, I must say, explains. What's, what difference we got there? I mean.
The difference is, do you explain why council reached its current preferred option and explain all the options? Or do you actually ask the public to vote on each and every single option, including, for example, Ginnorkey?
Well, it's why we should be. Oh, because as I said, if you do, if you do go, if you do go with any of these, as I said, you lose the name or other council will lose their name if you go, if you go to devoting. And the fact is, I believe that's the rate payer's job to tell us. I mean, we're trying to consult with these people, saying, do you want Clarence to survive or do you want to be taken over by Hobart? I mean, that's the option they've got. Do you want us to go southeast? Do you want us to go with Sorrel, Tasman or do you want us to stay the same? And I believe if Clarence is to go, as I said earlier, I want the rate payers to tell myself and the other 11 aldermen that I don't think we're going to have a final decision tonight. I don't even know if we need to make a decision tonight. I don't know if we can come back in three weeks' time in a meeting and put something else up and maybe we consult with the alderman again to get something that everybody's happy with. So I don't know if we need to keep going on with this or we can defer, or can defer to it to next meeting where we get some more consensus because we could be going on with this for another, you know, half hour.
And not get to an answer.
It's an important decision, I think we should give it the time it needs. Alderman Farman?
I'm going to defer, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, to defer to the next meeting.
Sorry.
I was up before that.
You were, you had a floor. She only moved the procedural before, so.
No, that's the other, it was on the other one.
I'm losing track. Alderman Farman, I haven't had you, please go ahead.
I too would support the change. That council explains in detail all the options listed by SGS in any community consultation process conducted by council into the voluntary measures. These consultation documents are to be drafted to include the strengths and weaknesses for the community of each option listed by SGS. And furthermore, that the consultation information is, has an overview of each option adhering to the Minister for Local Government's guiding principles of the biology of amalgamations. I think that the rest of the sentences back up the change so that if there was any feeling that all the options weren't going to be put forward, I feel that, I feel safe that all the options are going to go out with the strengths and weaknesses and, and I think that this will come back to a workshop, obviously, for further discussion and that within those workshop discussions, we then investigate the strengths and weaknesses.
Alderman Thirley? Sorry, Alderman Farman, you finished?
Um, to alleviate everybody's issue about consultation, couldn't we add at the end of number three, and your comments are invited?
I think we can actually deal with that as we put together the consultation package.
I think we can actually deal with that as we put together the consultation package subsequently.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, so I support, I support.
So hold that thought. Other speakers? Right of reply, Alderman Campbell?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we've canvassed it enough, and it's now time to make the decision. Any further discussion, it's not gonna achieve any more than we've already discussed.
So the motion before the chair is now Alderman Walker's first motion, except the word includes is replaced by explains and details. All those in favour? Against? That motion is carried. We move on to part B. And thank you for your forbearance. I think it has been a very important discussion, and I'm sure we'll have another one on part B now. Alderman Von Berto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I've got an alternative motion, which I will hand out, and we need five minutes again.
Okay, we've got everyone backed, so resume the meeting. Thanks very much. Alderman Von Berto has moved to motion. Do we have a second there? Alderman McFarlane, I think.
Alderman Piers.
Defer to Alderman Piers. Thank you, Alderman McFarlane. Uh, Alderman, pardon me. Alderman Von Berto.
Mr. Mayor, in our deliberation in relation to part A, I explained my views in relation to community consultation, and I also explained my views on that I believe we actually need to, not only inform, but consult with the community in relation to all of the options. Obviously, I've spoken about the SGS report in relation to the Greater Hobart feasibility study. The same applies for a line concerned for the KPMG feasibility study that has been done for the Greater Southeastern Council scenario. I actually believe, just as the other three councils have done, that we need to go out to our community, looking at all of the options, and if you like, as was described in the previous part, we need to actually allow them to vote, to give their feedback in relation to which option they actually prefer. As it says in the Sorrel Agenda, that's the survey that the Sorrel Council did, and it also said this in the Tasman Agenda, and it also said it in the La Morgan Spring Bay Agenda, the survey was designed to ascertain the community feel on the topic. So to gauge, to actually do a formal survey with the community to gauge what their feel is. Okay, it might come out that 25% or, um, not 25%, because we'd be actually putting out the five options, that all of the options are fairly close, as was the case in Sorrel and as was the case in Tasman. And La Morgan Spring Bay is continuing their consultation at this point in time, their survey, so that hasn't, results haven't come in for that. But at least then, we actually have a formal consultation with our community. I hear what Alderman James has said, and I heard from Alderman Piers, that with their contact with the community in various ways, shapes and means, they are hearing, they believe, the response that their, that our community has. I want to actually have a formal consultation, not information, let's just say, it would involve information, but it would go that step further and actually involve people getting back to us with their particular option, once they've been informed in relation to the pros and the cons, and why we at this point actually have the particular preferred option. I think it's really important to keep in mind that, as I said, this whole decision tonight is about public consultation. It's not actually about making the final decision, because it's beholden on us that we actually take into account the feasibility study from experts, the peer review from experts, and also our community's view. All of those aspects come into our final decision-making. So that is why I am actually putting this forward, as far as that there needs to be consultation about all of the options.
Thank you, Mayor. I conclude with Alderman Von Berto. Now, where we say consultation, as I've had discussions with yourself, Mayor, it needs to be professional consultation, not the oft- that oft- some others have been a bit of a Mickey Mouse type of thing. Look, as I said before, if the name Clarence in this council disappear, I want a professional consultation, so I get the reply, the answer we want from the ratepayers of Clarence. Now, I think this is a great way to start, because people can, nobody can say they haven't been consulted. Nobody can say they haven't been given every option that we've got. But we've got numerous reports here, that's one advantage worth of. To, to break it down, uh, you know, I know would be very difficult for some people to comprehend, but we want that. We want that information. We want them to have a vote, to have a say, and bring it back to us. As I've said ten times tonight, if Clarence is gonna lose its identity, I want the ratepayers to tell myself and the other Alderman that.
How's your Alderman Piers all done?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find this really difficult to support. And the reason I find it really difficult to support is it says all the options. I'm really happy for the consultation to include every option that Clarence is involved in. But I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair to us, and I don't think it's fair to our ratepayers, to go out and consult to them on options which have nothing to do with Clarence being in the mix. How can they decide if it's in the interest of the ratepayers of Sorrel, Tasman and La Morgan Spring Bay or not? How can they decide if it's in the interest of Sorrel and Tasman to decide? It's, it's, how can they get that information? How can we get that information, other than, through, other than through reading the reports?
I believe the question was rhetorical and not invited comment. It was rhetorical, actually, wasn't it? Thank you.
So rhetorically, having read the reports, and all the questions that come up around those. Yes, happy for us to talk to our ratepayers, to give us information on, on the two options that include, three options, if you should do nothing, that include Clarence. But I, I can't really find it in my heart to support some data, to comment on something that, that doesn't relate to them.
Well, as a ratepayer in Tasman and Sorrel, or of Clarence, what I can say from the front, Alderman Von Berto suggesting Clarence residents should be keenness about mergers that do not include Clarence. I think it's totally improper for us to set Clarence residents' view in relation to possible mergers between Sorrel, Tasman, Sorrel, Tasman and La Morgan Spring Bay, when it does not involve Clarence. What Sorrel, Tasman, Sorrel, Tasman, La Morgan Spring Bay do outside of Clarence is none of Clarence's business.
Other speaker, Alderman James. Here's another example of Clarence Alderman sitting on their hands. This airy-fairy motion doesn't do anything in the eyes of the public, in my view. Tonight, we discussed bike lanes versus safety precautions, uh, safety measures in Clarence Street. There was extensive consultation, and Alderman Von Berto made the comment that this went out to consultation, and there was a majority in favour of, of the bike lanes. This...
I wondered the relevance between bike lanes and...
Alderman, please be quiet for a moment. Please give him just a little bit longer to draw the analysis with this particular motion, otherwise I will be drawing a point of order as well. Alderman James, please continue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the result of that consultation was there was a favorable number of people in favour of bike lanes. We go out to consultation on this, and we may get a decision that Clarence should not proceed with any merger whatsoever. That's one of the options, because that's one of the four. On the other hand, we may get a, a decision that, uh, might mean that, uh, remain the status quo. Are we gonna take that on board and say that is people's wish, that we shouldn't do anything? We should stay as we are? I don't think we would make that decision, because there has been a lot of movement afoot from our neighbouring councils, that they want to see some merger, voluntary merger between us. And, and, and Sorrel has said that they would like to merge with, uh, with Tasman. Tasman has, well, that's sort of been indirect, and, and Tasman with, um, with, uh, uh, not with La Morgan Spring Bay, but with Sorrel. So look, the whole point of this, this, this debate is that, and I made the comment a moment ago, we're sitting on our hands. We are not giving up or providing a proposal to the public to advise them, and they can come back and say, no, they don't want a merger with, uh, Clarence, Sorrel or Tasman. Okay? They may say that, but if we have an option, if we have a recommendation, then they may say, well, look, Clarence Alderman have debated this ad nauseam, and have come up with a, with a proposal to, and a suggestion that there should be a southeastern council. But by putting all four options in front of people, it's gonna confuse them. They just don't know what to do. They'll say, oh, what's this? And they probably might just discard it. Whereas if the Alderman have put up a proposal, like for the Clarence, Sorrel and Tasman, then they can have got something to grapple with, they've got something that they can discuss, rather than sit around a table about ten people saying, oh, that one's status quo, no, no, Peter, John, no, 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 go with, with Sorrel, no, no. It's just confusing. It just doesn't defeat, it defeats the purpose. Whereas we should show some leadership, that we should put forward a proposal and then put it out to consultation, okay? Yep, out to consultation, and then get feedback and make a decision. Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, one quick question as I start through you to the general manager. Uh, to the general manager, at which point did we resolve amongst ourselves that the, that Clarence's preferred option was Sorrel, Tasman and Clarence? It's not listed, headed up in the KPMG report, is that? Um, it seems that the first time I knew about it was in the final report, because it seemed like a draft report was circulated a few weeks prior to that, it was going to possibly or was going to include La Morgan Spring Bay?
Um, through, Mr. Mayor, I did workshop, I had a copy of this report, and it was my understanding, I'm prepared to accept that erroneously from the last workshop, that that was the preferred option. I'm happy to accept that.
Well, in, in which case, then, you know, the premise of, of the officer's recommendation has some big issues. Now, I look at what Alderman Von Berto has done, and what I like about this versus the, uh, somewhat frugal part B that is the alternate, is that it actually talks about the term strengths and weaknesses. Strengths and weaknesses is how we go about it. We're giving the informed choice, and yes, we can talk about strengths and weaknesses with Sorrel and Tasman, there's no problem doing that. But I'm, we, we keep getting corralled down the road, we are the Henry Ford of councils, and it's any option you want, as long as it's this. So I think it's fine to lead with something, and in an effort, and I will say that I am supporting Alderman Von Berto's, uh, motion as it's table. I absolutely am. But I do understand that as it's currently constructed, it doesn't actually have a preferred option. So as a peacemaker that I am, I'm going to be foreshadowing an option C, and if, and I'll speak to that soon. And if that option is defeated, it will open the way for someone else to do an alternative ocean, uh, um, motion C, on what they, they believe that when we go out, what our default preferred position should be. So I foreshadow that I will actually be, uh, moving an alternative C, and I'm about to circulate it, Mr. Mayor, and that is that council determines that KPMG's option three, being an amalgamation of La Morgan Spring Bay, Sorrel and Tasman is the current preferred option, and I look forward to explaining the rationale on this. Of course, we're going for all the community's options, but I'm happy to lead with this. And if this gets shot down, and it probably will, struggle to get a second up, it gets recorded on the annals of time of what was the rationale for that. Because we have been not very awesome around rationale, and quite frankly, on the not very awesome campaigns, a shout out to Sorrel Council and a shout out to Tasman Council for getting all the information and deciding that they can all go through, and we're not gonna take it a fine position. So I'm circulating that now.
Could I ask, Mr. Van Heek, to circulate it, perhaps after we've dealt with the motion, so that we're not getting too many bits of paper on the table at the same time? Thank you, Alderman Walker. Other speakers? Alderman Dast?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I support Alderman Von Berto's, um, motion. It, I, I agree with his statement of, uh, uh, opportunity for consultation, to give strengths and weaknesses, and to say that which we shouldn't consult, because it's gonna confuse the public, is really a gross insult to the public, and underestimating their intelligence. I mean, we are, there are options here that I think we should, uh, adhere to, you know? And, um, I think Alderman Von Berto gives us those, um, clarity on those options we can have.
Other speakers? Alderman McFarlane?
Just to not say very much, but I do support Alderman Von Berto's motion.
Thank you. Alderman here?
Um, I support Alderman Von Berto's motion, and I'd also like to make the point that it, and I'm, I'm not wedded to Clarence, Sorrel, Tasman as, as a preferred option. Um, but in relation to the option that doesn't include Clarence, I think what we need to do when we construct a consultation is when we're talking about the strength and weaknesses, it says for the Clarence community. So clearly what we're saying is, well, these are the options included in the report, and when it comes to a merger of Sorrel, Tasman and La Morgan Spring Bay, the strengths and weaknesses for Clarence are none. We maintain the status quo. Um, you know, that, that's, that's what, that's what we would include in the explanation. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem with outlining that that was one of the options canvassed, uh, in the, in the KPMG study. Obviously, it's not something that's really up to our ratepayers, should those, how they decide to proceed with that, but, yeah, let's lay it on the table and explain that that was one of the options canvassed.
Other speakers? Right of reply, uh, I think it's Alderman Von Berto. So the option before the chair is, as circulated by Alderman Von Berto, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the motion and against? The motion is carried. Okay. I've lost the place. Well, it doesn't matter, the motion was carried, the foreshadowed motion doesn't, uh, doesn't get a g.
That's wonderful.
Um, that concludes our governance voluntary amalgamation debate. Alderman's question time. Uh, there are no matters on notice, questions without notice. Alderman Von Berto?
Mayor, I'd like to know, to get an, or could I get an update in relation to the South Gate Park? As Safra has contacted me, concerned as to what is actually occurring, because they've heard rumours that, um, there is something else afoot apart from the Gate Park being built.
Through, Mr. Mayor, we have, we are, well, I've requested to, uh, to authorise further discretionary planning application, uh, in, uh, to amend the fairly restrictive hours operation applied on originally requires a discretionary application as part of that approach.
Through, Mr. Mayor, we, we might attempt to contact the Northern Council today.
So, I mean, it might actually be as soon as possible, hopefully within the week, ten days.
Can I ask a question in close camp?
Certainly. Alderman Piers?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, some time ago in council, I haven't got a reply yet, I, I referred to Mr. Graham's question, uh, to a question that pedestrian refuge roughly where we service Tasmania is. If we've got any advice, you will be... If we've got any advice, you will be. I'll raise it, I'll raise it again. Mayor, look, confidence I've been to on others, cyber attacks on computer systems, do we know of any, any effort to get into our system, because we've got a lot of confidential
Past recovery plan, if we've got the ransomware?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, in answer to the, I guess, first question, we've had no, um, incoming or instance of any cyber attack, um, since the well-publicised attacks that occurred, occurred around the globe, um, in the last week, we have taken additional measures to, um, to protect our systems, including, um, regular updates, um, of, um, that come through from Microsoft and so forth, and also an education programme has started to ensure that they are aware of the dangers of email attachments, particularly P and Word documents.
Um, yeah, General Manager, do we have an update where we're going? I know it's a brand new issue with Begamiya Strip. Um, it was discussed at a workshop, I wasn't at, but is it coming for two councils all about, about what's going to happen, it's a terrible mistake.
Past workshop, I was going to come back to council again, another workshop on options
Alderman here, order please.
Hey, um, just, we had a memo circulated recently in regards to the strategic review of Business East, I'm just wondering what the next step in that's going to be.
I'm asking for, uh, all such as that to be taken by Serta, we've asked, asked to be listed at the next Serta meeting, trying to come in for discussion.
All right, and that will be, um...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were some issues with the toilets at Simmons Park and DDA access, and I wonder what the status is, I know they've been looked at. I received a media statement from the Minister Jeremy Rockford on his, um, launch of the CAT Management Plan, still had to go through legislation, but could the Aldermen have accomplished that, because it shows what they approved and what they didn't? And also, I noticed in the paper, could we have a report on possible effects for our commercial and residential accommodation in Clarence, with the Airbnb permit system that the state government is now, um, allowed to, or have facilitated and creating by, establishing a self-assessment form with a $250 payment fee to create your own Airbnb?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we've actually, I've signed off today on briefing that, although the legislative changes are, I've had to say, I'm not sure.
Hope it's possible to explain and, uh, tell us about the process that council will adopt if somebody comes to us.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it is coming to you, I believe, in a, in a briefing report, which I've already signed off on.
I'll follow this up later. To Mr. Graham through, through the Chair, but it probably should be a Alderman's request, which I can facilitate, in relation to Honeywood Drive, apparently a car, um, wheels came off and got stuck in the, the road verge and damaged the tyres, I just wonder, could that, the road verge has been checked for, um, 20 metres from the entrance to Mr., to 75 Honeywood Drive? Yeah, would you like me to put it in writing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, uh, Mr. Graham, in relation to the traffic calming proposal for the East Brisbane area, are you any more enlightened on the prospective timeframe of when that might be implemented?
Firstly, um, the General Manager made a comment about the Alderman's trip to Binzhou, China. Could he be a little bit more definitive in his time that this report, it's now been two months since the expedition to China, of which seven Aldermen in this place attended and went? So is that possible to give us a time that, A, it will be provided to the Aldermen, and B, be released to members of the public?
Hey, uh, thanks very much for the interest in our trip, Alderman James, and we'll try and get it to you for the next council meeting.
Next council meeting?
We'll aim for that.
All right, well, so we get to this council meeting, that's, that's closer. Do you have a second question?
Yes, I have. The next question is through you to Mr. Gibbs and his capacity as acting manager of planning. Mr. Gibbs, I have received communication from a, a ratepayer in the Clifton Beach area to say that there has been extensive landfilling on the coastal reserve in parts of Sanford, Clifton Beach Road, and also, uh, Cremorne. Do these, uh, landowners or truck delivery drivers have to have any permit to, um, obviously have landfill dumped onto their properties, given that most of those areas are within the coastal reserve?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of...
Can I provide the detail? Have a check out. Thank you. Uh, that concludes Alderman's question time, item 13 is, uh, need for the meeting to go, be closed, and, uh, for the public to leave. So thank you for your endurance tonight, it's been a long night, and appreciate your That's the aim, yes. Well, the typewriter, somebody might break the typewriter, Alderman James.
Dogma, the aim of my secretary to have a typewriter.
How long did your report take when you went over the list?
I haven't given much.
First Alderman here, second Alderman Pierce, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, and...